I'd like to call a meeting in order. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
David Burris. JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Melanie Wilson. Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as always, council, conflict of interest items, if you have any, let the council, rest of the council know before you vote, please. And another reminder that the microphone is your friend. Get up and close and personal with it. Make sure the audience can hear your comments. It'll also be for the folks that are watching on the website, though. The microphone's your friend. Motion to approve an amended agenda. The first item is to the accounts payable claims that increases from $237,079.04 The next change is to the Wells Fargo credit card claims. That goes from $5,399.90 to $5,419.99. And Misty, would you let the council know what changed in each of those, please?
In your AP batch, there is a negative check entered. Obviously, you can't issue a negative check. That was removed. And in your credit card claims, we did not have all of the claim vouchers to match the statements and were able to pull the statement. So your batch is actually correct. Your agenda just had the wrong dollar amount on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda with changes in accounts payable claims from $237,079.04 to $237,147.92. And the Wells Fargo credit card claims from $53,99.90 to $5,419.99.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the amendments from the December 19th council meeting.
Make a motion to approve the December 19th council meeting?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between $116,477.66.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto a motion for the current claims and the 2022 accounts payable claims.
I'll make a motion to approve current claims of $149,276.56 and the 2022 accounts payable claims of $237,000...
$147.92.
$147.92.
And 92 cents. Second.
Discussion.
I have a question on page two.
Of the payables or the current claims?
Current.
Okay.
I don't want everybody jumping down my throat again, but when did Oakley sunglasses become part of the...
I think that's the credit card claims, and those are next.
Oh, yeah, wait.
Did you have any other questions on those, Craig?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
I make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims in the amount of
Second.
Discussion.
Page two. Again, when did $157 Oakley sunglasses become part of your... How can they justify kind of personal stuff in the clothing allowance?
It's not personal, and speaking with the police chief, it will be considered equipment. It will not be owned by the police officer. It will be the same as his weapon or any other equipment that is city property.
So does that mean if the snow plow drivers want to buy something like that, they can have their clothing allowance? Or are they also working for the city? I mean, the lights get awful bright down in the city all. I just... They're just getting carried away, in my opinion. They're supposed to hold back on spending stuff for the end of the year. Misty sent an email out to everybody, and they're the only ones that haven't done it.
I understand the concern, Craig, and I don't disagree with it. I spoke with Chief Norton today. Since this is a first time, and I don't know that any of us would agree with it, what Chief is going to do is going to define what is included in the annual, what we're calling clothing allowance, what items should be included in that so that this type of thing does not happen again. He did approve it. We did discuss it. I don't believe it will happen again. As the mayor said, it is considered departmental property, so if the officer does leave the department, it'll stay with the department. But that doesn't address your concern. But the preventive measure, the corrective action going forward to fix this is defining each piece of equipment that is included in the annual clothing allowance, clothing or personal equipment allowance that each officer gets. And if it's not part of that, it either won't be purchased, or it will take knowledgeable authorization to go outside of that list. So...
I would like to see... Now, last time, the street shop clothing, they had every name down there and what they bought. I'd like every department to do that.
I think that's what you'll see.
That's what I'm working on, Craig. Thanks for bringing that up. I will have a spreadsheet by department showing what the clothing is that they will be purchasing through the clothing allowance for each individual, have each individual listed as well. And in the list of clothing will be a brief description of the clothing, and if they're buying it from a particular place, then the model number as well, and then the dollar value of what that would cost, so that we can keep track of it that way. But that's something as a part of the clothing policy I'm looking at in all departments, and the PD.
I mean, this would irritate me no matter what, what sunglasses. The most expensive ones you could buy. I mean, you can get sunglasses for 20, 30 bucks. It's nice sunglasses. All my prescription sunglasses don't cost that much. That's all I got.
I'd like to say something. I'm not defending Craig, not defending anybody's position here, but I do want to bring up an obvious point here. We, as councilmen and women, we took an oath, okay? And by taking that oath, we're looking at things like we're supposed to be looking at. That's how I feel. Now, each department has their thing that they do. I get that. But, you know, we're just doing our job. Let's just put it that way, okay? So if we don't do our job, we don't keep an eye on the taxpayers' dollars, we're not doing our job. I know this is miniscule. It doesn't miniscule in some ways, but we still got to remember, we as councilmen and women, this is what we're up here to do. So that's my piece.
I would add that I appreciate that thorough review and questions from all of you, so thank you for this discussion.
I mean, it's not like I like to talk about the police department every time the bills come up, but it seems like every time the bills come up, there's something in there that irritates me. So I apologize to the police department for bringing all this up, but it's something as a councilman I think I have to do.
As Bill mentioned, he has spoken with the chief. I've spoken with the chief. JR and Jeff had mentioned that they've been working on, you know, purchase of clothing for the departments, though it's not going unnoticed. And we have a new supervisor who has admitted that, you know, he's still learning the ropes. We'll get to the bottom of it. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry? No?
I'll have to go with no, too.
Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
No.
Larry Pratt.
No.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we have four?
Yes.
The motion passes. On to communications from the public. Do you have anybody that'd like to adjust the council?
Hi, I'm Ron Richards, 340 North 23rd Street, Hot Springs, South Dakota.
Hello, Ron.
That looks about the same. Okay. I'm here representing the American Legion Post 71 downtown and the American Legion Riders. You know that the Riders, a number of years ago, started a brick program down there and had memorial bricks that were all laid in the ground. Not a good location for them. We took it on ourselves to remedy that. We pulled all those bricks up. We constructed a set of racks, which you can see on that photograph there. And I will add that those have been powder coated since then. They look much more presentable. While we were doing this, and I was out there looking, I was watching, watching them taking down these old time streetlights along there. And I thought how nice it would be if we could get one or two of those to set up in there. And I approached the mayor, and he said, "Come to you." Here I am. It's just, I made some notes here. We moved the racks due to deterioration... We moved two racks due to deterioration of the blocks from the ground and laying in that snow and whatnot all that time. We thought we can do something better. We put our heads together. We built those racks. We've invested about $3,500 bucks in those racks right now, with the powder coating and the fabrication, all free labor. We do have plans to replace all the blocks that deteriorated and became unsightly. And the Legion's going to stand behind that. That'll probably drop us another couple, $2,000 or $3,000 bucks. We're not looking for money, but we're looking for light poles. We can do the groundwork for them. We can set the, make, build the foundations, the pedestals, as you would. We can build that, and we'll build up to city specs, what they want us to do, and get them set to be installed. I don't know if we can pick them up and stand them up on the block, but we can do all that. What we're looking for are the lights, and a go-ahead from the city to do this. If I understand right, they would probably be incorporated right along with a road along that trail at some future time, possibly. And I think this would be a nice addition right there at that spot, and we can do our veterans a little bit better job than we did do here on this.
All right.
And if you look on the drawing there, it does say not to scale. There were some draftsmen errors on there. But roughly, the two choices that we're looking at are right outside of that there. There's ones that says alternate, or these are little flower beds right here in the front, and they would sit nicely in the middle of that flower bed. You could plant flowers around the base of them. And either way, the electrical is yet to be determined what happened there. I think that's all I have. I think I kept my...
So you're looking for two lights, Ron?
Two lights, totally likely.
I know we discussed about replacing the lights along Freedom Trail with the ones...
Right.
With those that's...
That are going from the street.
Those would be the size you would need, Ron? Or what, how much bigger?
Did you want the big lights or the little lights?
Well, not the baller lights. We want the...
The tall ones.
The taller ones. You're just off, that would fit right in with what...
Yeah, they would match up.
Future plans there. You've got them on the bridge there, and I think it would just tie things together nicely and make for something we can be proud to look at. So I'll leave it in your hands, and you can let me know the results.
All right. Well, when you and I talked at the end of last week, I'd mentioned that it was discussed in Public Works, and I believe Craig is going to be making a recommendation from the Public Works Committee about placing the lights there.
Yeah, this will come at very little cost to the city. It's all volunteer labor, volunteer... We have the funds raised already to buy the metal and stuff, so... Just for your information, each one of those weighs about 350 pounds, and we picked them up and carried them and pulled them all over the state, it seems like.
And if they're full of bricks, nobody's going to carry them off.
No. Also, you don't see them in the pictures there. There's pedestals. We built pedestals, and these racks will slide down into these pedestals. The pedestals be anchored to that concrete, and then the pedestals are just to do final tuning to get them nice and level, and then their set screws set in them, you know, set them in.
Good.
All home engineered, but it all worked out, you know.
When would you be ready for the lights if council... When would you be ready for the lights if council decides to go ahead and...
When the dead weather gets a lot nicer. Before we can dig a hole.
In the spring, then?
I'm just spring, yeah. There's no rush to do all that. We're not going to put the racks out until it gets some decent weather to be out there and laying on the ground, drilling holes. We'd like to have it all done before summer really gets here, or at least everything in place, whether it's wired, inspired or not. So we've got a long window here.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Anyone else that's... Any questions for Ron?
Oh, yeah. Just for the record, these are all made out of quarter inch thickness steel. The lights, the angles, everything, it's quarter inch steel. It's not...
Well...
Not the cheapest we could buy. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Anyone else from the public? All right, we'll move on to our council updates. First one is Public Works Engineer Tracy. Give us an update on the road project and the water and sewer.
Good evening and welcome to the new year. As the project moves into its second year of operation, the week before Christmas, with the sub-zero weather, the DRM decided to take a break from trying to put in a sewer main. I really don't blame them. A little bit tough for the people to be down in those ditches when it's zero, 10 below, whatever, trying to set pipe. But last week, they definitely made a lot of progress on North River Street again, and they have got the new sewer line in, up quite a ways now past City Hall already. And their plan is to begin excavating again tomorrow and be continuing, you know, with the lay of the sewer main on up North River Street, up until they get up to the turnaround by the old power office. And then at that point, kind of depending on weather, depending on their schedules, then they'll probably switch back over to the water main and do that all the way up to the Minnetoka intersection, which of course, we're anxiously awaiting that because that will be the end of the 16-inch ductile iron pipe that has not really performed very well in recent months. So that's pretty much where the road project's at. The rest of the project is pretty much taking a winter break now. I've noticed there was a little bit of, a couple touch-up things here and there, but as far as I can tell, complete concrete is pretty much on a winter break. So as far as contractors go, we just have DRM here now, and it is their plan to continue working through the winter. So other than if, you know, we have another sub-zero spell or something, they'll probably proceed fairly steadily on the project, which is really good. It's also understanding that core construction does intend to be coming in probably sometime this month and be working on the foundations for the sidewalk, the suspended sidewalk project. So that's pretty much it for the road project itself. Other related things, the new digester lid is scheduled for installation on the 19th of January, so hopefully that'll all go fine unless we have another sub-zero spell, but we're hoping we won't. So anyway, that's pretty much what I have. Any questions? Larry?
Yeah, you said that they're going to come in and start working on the foundation for the suspended sidewalk. Is that going to affect the two lanes of road there? Because right now, those two lanes are looking a little bit rough.
It's our understanding from the last meeting, informational meeting we had, is they are going to do that work up at the north end, and then as soon as they get the sewer in up to the old, I'm still calling it the old power building.
Polished.
Yeah, polished nails, right. Then that area will have a temporary surface put down, and then the area that we're driving on right now that, yes, is definitely falling apart quite rapidly, will then be under construction for the foundations.
Now, what about those two? Is that part of it? Those two pipes coming out of the ground by the polished nails? Are those going to stay there or move? What's the story on that?
There's some temporary things there. Part of that, there's two fire hydrants there. There's a new fire hydrant and an old fire hydrant. The old fire hydrant is what? Is at the end of the existing 16-inch, the old pipe? And then the other fire hydrant is new one, and for right now, they have that temporary pipe. It's a jumper to, you know, to at least have a certain amount of water flowing and, you know, keeping that, the new pipe energized. That situation would not work so well in the summer, you know, because obviously, it's a reduction in volume, but in the wintertime, it's been fine. But that's, yeah, those are temporary things.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tracy? Anybody in the public have any questions about the project? All right. Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Our next council update is our library director, Mary.
Mary, you might need to bring it closer to your mouth. You should just be able to... Yep.
The microphone's your friend.
Okay. We just finished up with our fall reading program. We had it for three- to six-year-olds, so we didn't expect very many because there's not too many little kids that were getting out in the winter, but we actually averaged eight for every week. So Mary's doing a great job with bringing in kids to do her little reading programs, and the kids had a blast. We wrapped it up a little after that, just before Christmas, with Santa visiting, and we actually had 20 people come to see Santa, and they enjoyed that as well. We've had an average of 3,000 people every day coming in to use the library, even with the nastier weathers.
Did you say 3,000?
3,000. Monthly average. Sorry. I guess I can do that, too. Monthly average, 3,000. Even with the nastier weather, we're still getting a lot of people visiting. We're doing maybe about 2,000 books, DVDs checked out on average for the month. People just come in all the time. We've had a total of 172 new cards for people living in Hot Springs over the last quarter. We've had 89 from Fall River County, 21 from Custer County, and four from other places. So we've had 286 new cards over the last quarter. So we are increasing our people. On the 31st of January, we're having our first book club meeting. We've had requests to do this, so we're starting out with the book Girl in His Shadow by Audrey Blake. And then as people join our book club, they can make recommendations, and we can host different books every month so that people can join our book club. And that's pretty much it.
Those are some great numbers.
Yeah. Thank you.
I get to come by there and see y'all on a daily basis almost, and I want to say that Mary and the young ladies that run the facility, I think y'all are great. I really do. I mean, if you get a chance to go down and just visit with them, go visit with them. It's fun. So I just want to give you recognition, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I do work with great people.
Are you mostly settled in? Have you found your rhythm?
I think I have, and then the months change and new things come up, so I'm still learning. Like, I know coming up, I have to learn for the state report, so there's always new things to learn. But everybody's been great. Everybody's been supportive and helpful, so I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
Just to thank you for all you do. It's, you must be doing something right to keep having the numbers as high as they are, so charge on. Appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And you're going to be getting a new roof.
Yes. That would be very nice to have in the roof.
Finally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Brings us to personnel. A motion to approve personnel items A through F.
Make a motion to approve personnel items A through F.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Onto our ordinances. Our first one, item A, is second reading of ordinance 1245. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1245, an ordinance transferring four lots in the Boulder Falls addition from rural service district to urban service district.
Second.
Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Before we get into our next ordinance, I would ask that we jump to new business item B. These two are related. So both of these have to do with the wayfinding. We have to get state DOT's approval for the signs, wayfinding signs that we want to install on 385. So late last fall, I presented a possible ordinance to you. The ordinance itself was very lengthy, and there were some public comments about some of the locations that were on it. So we pulled that back for your consideration and have been working with the company that you authorized us to hire, ISG, for the wayfinding. So what we've done here is we've taken the bulk of what was in the ordinance, the original ordinance, and put it in a policy. It's that policy that identifies the process that we go through to determine what locations are eligible for wayfinding signs along 385. We also talk about the way that a private business can have a wayfinding sign installed. So that's what that policy is about, is the details, and that needs to be approved first because it's the ordinance that the state is looking for, but in the ordinance, we make reference to the wayfinding sign policy. So anytime we want to...
The ordinance requires two readings, and it's not actually passed until after the second. I think it's okay to keep the order the way it is, even with your explanation, since it won't become effective until after it's published after the second reading.
Okay. So any change we want to make to the policy itself... Okay. So any change we want to make to the policy itself won't require an update of the ordinance, which we've learned can be expensive when we make those changes. So that's the reason that I had separated out the details of the wayfinding policy from the ordinance itself. So that's the reason...
Make a motion to approve the city of Hot Springs master wayfinding and sign policy.
Second. Discussion.
The second was Lukens. Pratt. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right. So we go back to our ordinances. Ordinance, item B, first reading of ordinance 1246.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1246, and ordinance revising title seven, traffic code, adding chapter 72, wayfinding.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Tebow, you call the role.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The motion passes. So with the approval of these two, we'll be able now to go back to ISG and give them a list of the locations that councils authorized for wayfinding signage, and have them begin looking at what the signs are going to look like. And of course, we're going to make recommendations to them what we think those signs should look like. And we've been doing this through Public Works. So if anybody from the public would like to have input, that will be the way that we'll do it, is through Public Works, working with ISG to figure out what our signs are going to look like. All right. Onto our resolutions. Resolution item A, resolution 2023-1, 2022 salary wage resolution.
Is that a typo?
23 salary wage resolution.
Does it say 22 on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it does. Yeah, both. I think I corrected them when I did them in it. So both B, A, and B made corrected to 2023. That's a typo. Correct.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2023-1, the 2023 salary wage resolution.
Second.
Discussion.
Between the two columns, is the first column, like, the base wage, and the second column is what they're making at present?
The first one is what we call a top-of-scale, although we don't top anyone out.
Right.
So that's 100% of the top-of-scale. And then, yes, the second column is what they're currently making.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next resolution, item B, resolution 2023-2, 2023 part-time and seasonal hourly pay rates.
I'll make a motion to approve 2023-2, 2023 part-time and seasonal hourly rates of pay.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Next one, resolution item C, resolution 2023-3, designation of depositories and official newspaper.
I make a motion to approve 2023-3, designation of depositories and official newspaper.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution item D, resolution 2023-4, resolution approving the hire of David Ganji.
Make a motion to approve 2023-4, resolution approving the hire of David L. Ganji of Ganji Law Office as special attorney for the city.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, was that? Oh, thank you.
So for the public, the city is hiring David Ganji to help us take a look at the lease that we, the current lease we have with Simons for the quarry, and also help us figure out whether a better route might be to sell that property. So that's the reason that we're hiring this individual. He does specialize in minerals and mining and this type of work. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution item E, resolution 2023-5, resolution appointing Ward One Alderman Craig Romi.
I'll make a motion to approve 2023-5, a resolution appointing Ward One Alderman Craig Romi to the Custer Fall River Waste Regional Waste Management District Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Discussion.
Will this make two of you on that board?
Just him.
Just him. Okay.
I'm stepping back.
That's confusing.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will need to know when the next meeting is for that. I have no clue.
And I don't have that with me tonight. Ms. D, do you have it there?
I'm looking. 1:12 at 7:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
All right. The motion passes. Onto new business. New business item A, discussion only. A review for proposal to add a new city policy restricting access to the TikTok app on city devices. Jeff, I believe this one's yours?
Yeah, this is simply a, getting ahead of the curve, I guess. Federal, state, and county have all restricted it. We don't think we have a problem. Doesn't appear to have a problem. We're just going to add to our personnel or our policy that that particular app is not authorized on city phones, nor is it authorized on government, the municipal computers. Ms. D has brought up a good point, which we really can't control at this point in the game. If they, even for those folks that are reimbursed for their phone, they're going to get a stipend for their cell phone and use their personal phone. We really, I don't think, at this point, don't have any control over that, although I'm going to defer to Garland before we implement that and see where we're at. Is this an FYI for council? If anybody has any questions or comments or concerns?
I got a question.
Yeah.
How would you know if they're doing it or not? Would we check the computers and phones?
Yes.
Want some help?
Well, I've already done the computers. We've already done the computers. And the computers are actually fairly simple, because we can put a, in the firewall, we can restrict that website from there, and then the apps that are in on the system or on the desktops. On the phones, enforcement is always going to be the major issue. We have to, we have to, yeah, I don't have an answer for you, Craig. We do need to try and enforce it, yes.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Is this going to just be like an administrative policy?
Yes.
Or is this going to be written into a existing policy somewhere?
I was going to, well, we need to discuss that. I was going to put it into the personnel policy, but well, this is kind of where it works, it'd be, but it is an administrative policy. It's not meant to be otherwise.
I think the employees ought to know that they're going to get checked every now and again.
I would agree. We're going to try and work that into it, Craig. Thank you.
Isn't that part of the agreement, whenever they're getting a stipend anyway, that they potentially could have their phones checked? Just because we're paying for...
I believe that's in the verbiage on that, but I will be honest, we're not checking the phones now to see. And, but I think that we need to start doing that. So we need to have them come in every quarter or whatever, and let's check the phones and be sure they're... By the time this is actually implemented, it may be a federal restriction period. We may not have it in the country at all, is what it's looking. There's legislation pending on that, so.
I remember also in the council, the first time that employees had phones and we never checked them. And I used to check the bills. Went down and see, I'll check the bills all the time. There was a city personnel that kept calling California, and his phone bill was more than, almost all of them put together, but they'd never done anything about it.
All right. Thank you.
I agree, we do need to check.
I agree with you 100%. That's on the enforcement side of everything else.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right. You've already approved new business item B, so we'll go on to new business item C, possible motion discussion to set election date.
Make a motion to set the election date as June 6, 2023, combined with the Hot Springs School District, and approve the combined election agreement.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item D, a possible motion discussion to confirm the intent of the city council to cover the following police department reserve officers.
I'll make a motion to confirm the intent of city council to cover the following police department reserve officers, unpaid volunteers for work comp purposes in 2023, Kyle Ellerbeck and Ryan Walz.
Okay.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item E, a possible motion discussion to approve the 2023 parades.
I make a motion to discuss to approve the 2023 parade, the Fourth of July parade, Freedom Ride Parade, the Hot Springs High School Homecoming Parade, December Parade of Lights, and the Hot Springs High School Graduation Parade.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item F, possible motion discussion to approve extending contract 2022-6.
Make a motion to approve the extending contract 2022-6 between the City of Hot Springs and Battle Mountain Humane Society for Animal Boarding Services in 2023, option year one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion to approve extending contract 2020-3.
I make a motion to discuss to approve the extending con, to approve extending contract 2020-3 between the City of Hot Springs and Jessica Luther for meter reading services in 2023, option year three.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item H, possible motion discussion to approve extending contract 2022-4.
I make a motion to approve extending contract 2022-4 between the City of Hot Springs and Teresa Moss for Police Department and City Hall Cleaning Services in 2023, option year one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item I, possible motion discussion to approve contract 2023-5.
Make a motion to approve contract 2023-5 between Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Lori McNair for fitness instruction at EPMS Facility.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And new business item J, possible motion discussion to approve and publish two times the notice for bidders, notice two bidders.
I make a motion to approve and publish two times the notice to bidders for the 2023 City of Hot Springs Multiple Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
Discussion. Though you've heard us talking about roof replacements a number of times, Public Works has kicked us around. Larry, Jeff, Craig, Dave had discussed what roofs to immediately get replaced. It's the library, the Mueller Center, City Hall.
Not City Hall.
Clubhouse, Civic Center.
Yeah, the Golf Course Clubhouse.
Pump station.
The library, the Evans Pumping Station, and then Mueller Civic Center, all the ones.
But the Evans Plunge is under warranty still, so it's getting fixed.
We are under Evans Plunge. We're under the Evans Plunge Pumping Station.
But Evans Plunge roof does need some repair.
It does need repair, but it is under warranty, yes.
Right.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Can you repeat those again?
I'm sorry.
Can you repeat those again?
Oh.
Our team over here, Mueller Center, Mueller Civic Center, Southern Hills Golf Course Clubhouse, the Public Library, and the Evans Pumping Station.
City Hall.
We're not doing City Hall. They're not required.
Yeah, but we said we want City Hall done because of the drain and stuff.
And that's the reason I'm asking the question is, I put the question to Craig because I didn't remember the five exactly. And when I responded to the email, I hope I responded that City Hall was one of the locations that Public Works wanted on there.
Yeah. Yeah, Dave, I remember Dave and Craig and I talked about that, because the way that drain's set up there, it's going to deteriorate real quick unless you've got somebody going up there almost every time after it rains and clean that dirt out of there. That rubberized roofing is going to deteriorate real fast with that. So that's just...
We didn't have that information, Larry, so we'll add it back to that, to that notice of bidders. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so we had a motion and a second, discussion?
Can we amend that, then, to include the City Hall? Do we need to amend that?
You had moved by Pratt and seconded by Romi. You want to include City Hall? That's fine.
Well, they don't have any of them here on this. This is just...
Notice to bidders.
We have to bid twice.
Okay.
But you can go on record and say...
We've added, we've added the notice to the...
Right. Okay, well, JR, you're pretty good at saying how to amend, so walk me through this. I've never had to amend one of these before. I make a motion to amend. Where are we at here?
Well, we didn't put any of the buildings on here. This is just so they have to bid twice, what you and I just voted on.
Right.
It's nothing to do with the buildings.
Okay, so...
But this is the notice that you're approving, so I would say as long as the alderman who made the motion and seconded the motion agree that you want to amend the notice to include City Hall, that I don't think you need to reread the motion again unless you'd like to.
So I'd make a, I'd make a motion to amend the bid to include all five, City Hall included.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? So the locations, then, are going to be the Southern Hills Golf Course, Clubhouse, the Mueller Civic Center, Hot Springs Public Library, Evans Pumping Station, and City Hall.
Correct.
Yes. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our committee reports. First one, Admin and Finance, JR.
Admin and Finance will meet on January 17 at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center.
Isn't this the time we have to do the old one, too?
I got it right here. No.
We wouldn't have had one at the...
We didn't have one.
We only meet once a month.
Remember when we went in executive session and the ones that didn't do, it was supposed to read the next time?
Right, but I didn't have one. Thank you.
So will be everybody asked that?
Yes.
Except me, because he did it. He had, just trying to pull that off so you guys know that.
Paying attention. Good job.
Next, Airport Advisory. Bill?
Airport Advisory will meet this Thursday, the 5th of January, 8:30 AM at the airport.
All right. Thank you. Custer Fall River Waste Management, Larry?
Next meeting will be January 12 at 7:00 PM at the Mueller Center. Craig Romi will be taking over.
All right. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Historic Preservation meets tomorrow, January 4 at 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center. Everyone is welcome.
Thank you. Evans Plunge, Linda?
Okay. The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met December 8 of 2022.
Okay, the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met December 8 of 2022. Present were myself, Chris Hansen, Okoya Zimiga, Tom Nas, Allison Ritter Bush, Mara Smith, Barry McNair and Kathy Wren per phone. Absent was Dennis Fisher. Updates, we are doing the December Punch Card Special, buy two, get the third one free. Swim Team continues to practice. We have hired one new guard with another one returning. With our exhaust fans working over the pool area, it has made a difference with the humidity. We continue to look at an observation deck enclosure. We will be looking at replacing the front facade of the building and insulating it perhaps with a metal covering. Closure brainstorming, no dates set for our annual closure for deep cleaning and draining the pool and power washing the pool walls. We're looking at refacing the hot tubs, replacing hot tub filters, cleaning walls, mop boards, replacing carpet as needed. Change out the shower in the steam room area with a new drop-in stall. Acid wash the floors, clean vents and filters, repaint gym equipment as needed. The plunge was planning on being closed all day December 24 and 25 for Christmas. The review of monthly incidents, none to report for November and October. Other items, the weathercraft rep was here checking on the roof since Larry and Jeff looked at it. Roof is under warranty with that company, but not sure if that includes hail damage. Discuss the handicapped area in front of the plunge. Question was asked if the whole sidewalk area would be replaced during the road project when it gets to that end of town. Next meeting will be January 12 at noon at the plunge. We adjourned at 12:38 p.m.
Run that by me again, Linda, you about the roof?
It's, the roof is, the representative was here checking on the roof since Larry and Jeff looked at it, and the roof is under warranty with that company, but not sure, she wasn't sure if that included hail damage.
Is the warranty only on one portion of the roof as well? Because the current leaking is in the weight room and the spin room, and I don't think that was the part of the roof that weathercraft replaced previously.
I'm not sure.
When was the inspector up? Do you know when they came out to look at that?
She didn't give me a date, but she said it had been since you and Larry had looked at the roof.
She sent me a couple emails about it because I asked the question after seeing the leaking roof on Monday. And when the weathercraft representative came up, it was frozen and they couldn't look to see and they had to come back. And then there was someone who came and did some immediate repairs so that further damage wasn't done, and that was someone different, and that is where it's leaking right now. So she and Tom are both working on it.
Oh, okay.
And getting representatives from the two separate roofing places to take a look.
We don't want that to slow down the larger RFP, so I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's some repairs that we have, we can always go back out again and contract it separately if we need to, but.
Well, and some of the, some of the, I'd like to see where those leaks are at, because I did specifically ask, and I just kind of didn't really get much of an answer from, but I would like to see where those leaks are coming from, if they're in relation to what I had pointed out to you on where those leaks were at, because the two big areas are the flat roofs, that would be weathercraft. The areas that I think that they would be leaking at is specifically that area where it's, we've got metal on the roof. So, yeah, I'd like to know where these leaks are at.
Here's what she said, "I'm still waiting to hear from Jeremy at Weathercraft, who was going to speak to his technician about damage as he checked it after Larry and Jeff had been up there. I will continue to bug him for a report. Our thought was that if there were damage, weathercraft would need to fix it as we are under warranty with them. However, the portion that is leaking up in the weight slash spinning room is the piece that was already repaired by a guy in Martin. It needed to be done quickly so it wouldn't further deteriorate. We had some trouble pre-Thanksgiving, I think it was that time period, and Kelvin McCollum came out and looked at it. It was frozen at that time since it was during the very cold snap, so he could not look at an area that looked like there was possible rock penetration. He will stay in contact with us on this and continue to work with us."
That's the same place it was leaking eight years ago, real bad. First time I was in council, it leaked up there too.
Is there any way Tom and I can get together and with you, Jeff, and just go look at that?
Yeah, I would say once the weather clears and we can get up there.
Yeah, even with the, even with the snow up there, that's still a good way of seeing it leak too, so.
And my point is, I don't think this has any effect on the RFP. I think that we would do it if we have to do anything ourselves, because we still don't know, we'll do it separately, is my recommendation.
I'll drop by your office, we'll talk. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Any other questions for Linda?
You, the road project isn't going in front of the plunge, now that sidewalk could be tore up.
I don't know where she got the idea that it was.
No, it stops at that intersection.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
At one point, we were discussing adding that street on to, trying to connect it on at one point.
Yeah.
We discussed that, but that has gone by the wayside due to extreme costs.
Even if we did, you do not think we'd put the sidewalk?
Well, I'd like to bring something to light on that. Right there, when you go on the front door, there are those three bars, blue bars that are on the concrete. Last year, two years ago, one of my passengers, special needs, got out, was going to walk him into the building. The concrete was not, it was gone. So he fell, checked him, told John Gregory he was fine. John Gregory got the crew to come over and they put that in there, they put Quick Read in there. But now those areas are starting to show damage again, and that's what I was referring to, is I was hoping to get those at least chipped out, put some more concrete in there to make that front door safe and smooth again, so.
Right.
Even though there's ground, it's first time they've heard of it.
Yeah, well, I did look at that, and yeah, it is crumbling there in that handicap area.
And it is in the same spot before, so.
Maybe that's something you can talk about repairing during.
Talk to them, they're going to put on Public Works for this discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll add it to my list of closure. We'll take a look.
It's kind of hard to do concrete if it's really cold though.
Yep.
And it happens springtime.
Yeah. Because the closure's in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
Linda? Linda? Greg had a question.
Why wasn't that on Public Works when it first came effects, we could get somebody to do something about it?
Well, I didn't find out about it until the first part of December, so.
What were you hearing? I heard nothing about that.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Parks Recreation, Larry?
This was Wednesday, December 7, so.
Tomorrow.
Nope, this is the last meeting.
No, I know what I'm saying. Sorry, I'm sorry.
You're hurting me, sir. So Deb and Linda, if I don't get it all, help me here, okay? Here we go. The Parks and Rec meeting started at 2:00 p.m. In attendance were Jeff Temple, City Administrator, Alder Women, Barvell and Johnson, Linda and Deb. From the public were Barb Walters and Gerald Coligan. There was no cemetery or parks update, rec update, first year of four, this is all old information too, so. First year of four seasons was a success for recreation, wrapping up any loose ends. On the new business, the playground equipment update scheduled for spring, city staff along and volunteers will do the work to install the new equipment at Upper St. Aquila Park. Park permits at Centennial Park. After farmer's market is over, vendors still set up, need to check to get, see if they have a permit to be set up at the Chautauqua after, I mean at Centennial Park. Park-related hail damage, needs to have ongoing discussion with park-related buildings in relation to hail damage repairs that will be going on in the Parks area, so we'll be keeping an eye on that, along with Jeff. Soccer Field Mueller Center upgrades to improvement of soccer field will begin in spring. Try to keep in more touch with the school as things progress with that. On the food park on the other end, it's shut down for the winter. Concerns over wall next to food park, public work is involved in wall improvements, so that would be brought to your attention there.
We talked about it.
Thank you, sir. In old business, it was brought up to ask the reason, ask why Butler Park on the south end has marker flags in the ground. These are markers for the practice field for the baseball coming up. And public comment, it was mentioned at Dog Park, water was shut off, walnut trees were put in. Baseball banners are a little ragged, brought to city administrator's attention. Recommendation to city council for historic lights from road project to be reused for Freedom Trail. Setting up email system for public to comment on the parks. The meeting adjourned at 2:45 p.m. Next meeting will be January 4, 2:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center, that's tomorrow, everybody's invited. All right, did I miss anything, ladies?
Any questions for Larry? Jeff, looking at the time sheets, it looks like the playground equipment has been delivered?
It's been delivered now, yes. I believe it was, I don't have confirmation, it was supposed to have been delivered last week, unless the weather got in the way. I haven't got confirmation that it's there yet. I'll check tomorrow and look, councilman.
Yeah, looking at their time sheets, there were a number of them that had, you know, entries for unloading or had to do with playground equipment.
I'm pretty sure that's the same one, but I just didn't verify that.
No, it's the donation for Centennial, for Chautauqua Park.
Okay.
But a number of folks have asked over the fall, when the equipment's going to be here, and I believe it's here.
It was supposed to be here last August.
All right, thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning will be meeting Wednesday, January 18 at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill, JR?
Public safety will meet this Thursday, January 5, 2:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Public Works, Craig?
We met on December 27, myself, Mayor Bob Nelson, Tracy, Justin. Jason. I think it was something like that. We talked about the trailer. Oh, we talked about trailer, had a tree branch dropped out, sewer plant, cost $10,000 for the damage. We're supposed to get, estimate and bring back to the city, I gather, with the God estimate. Our insurance company denied it, want to know, the company is working down there.
Was that on a building or a vehicle?
It was on a trailer.
Yes.
Enclosed trailer.
Right, was denied.
So I guess we didn't really know what to do about it yet. I don't know if the city's got to pay for it, seems our insurance company said no.
They determined the city has no liability. That person probably has insurance, right?
They have insurance, but I think as it turns out, if you have insurance on your car, it doesn't affect your trailer. You have to have separate insurance or something for your trailer, so that's not the city's problem. I mean, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not our liability, and I don't think the city council wants to pay, but I think it is not legally our responsibility, so.
Only problem I see with it, maybe I shouldn't even be discussing something like that, but it was on our property, they was there working that day, one of the tree branches on the dead tree, that sewer plant fell in their trailer.
Yeah, I would recommend that you talk to the claims adjuster if you have questions on how they determine whether or not it's liable. I'd be happy to get you that contact information.
Streets and maintenance, trimming in the alley will start this winter. They did upper, up on top of College Hill last winter, they think it's just as bad. It has been started up there again by asking about downtown, because they haven't even been downtown yet, so they didn't have an answer for it. Valley View Drainage, it's going to start next summer, if they have time to do it. Albany and Boardwalk, we're still waiting for somebody to pour concrete for us before we can do anything there. It's closed down for the winter anyway, so. Albany and Baltimore Intersections leveling, they poured the curb, but they haven't gotten to the problem yet. They raised the curb up higher so it wouldn't be a problem once they get the street done. Summit Road, I talked to Tracy and Billy, and the biggest problem that I see down there is where all those logs are to begin with, because it's all falling apart. And I told Billy, Tracy's going to go down and look at it, and I thought maybe those big blocks, that concrete place sells, to stack them in there, and then they can fill behind there, and they won't give away, they can, you can anchor them to the wall and secure it hopefully. And if we need to go further, eventually we can always add on. The ADA slabs at Macedonal, Centennial Park and Vision Source, Billy and Tracy's going to look at the Vision Source, and the other two are still waiting for people to pour concrete. It's hard to do it when can't get somebody to pour concrete. Irrigation at the Devo across from Lynn, Dakota Mart. Tracy and Bart talked about putting a new sewer line at, is that Park across from City Hall? Centennial Park, a bigger one with bigger heads, so it'll get the park and down below by the river, it's saying, you know, once around it'll go, it's big enough, it'll get both of them. One down here, we came to the conclusion that the group that wants to take care of them came to us and said that they would try to pay for the irrigation when they first came to us. I don't think the city can afford it at this point, so if that's the case, it might have to wait a year or so if the city has to do it. We can get water and stuff there, but the irrigation probably wouldn't happen right away. Okay, Sons of Legion flagpole, Billy said to me, he's getting tired of looking at it, he might just try to move it here eventually. Repair the stairs next to fire station, it's going to be repaired before May when they have their first event. And motel sets and you make a park, I gotta go to Parks Meeting and talk to Larry about what Public Works determined to do. I won't be the first one to be talked to.
Yeah, write that down.
Trees at the intersection of Fourth Street and Lincoln Avenue, will be cut down this winter. Billy's worried about one limb on a tree, so he don't know quite how that might affect because what they're going to have to do is take pictures of the concrete and stuff because it might fall on our driveway, so we might have to take pictures, make sure that if it gets broke, it shouldn't, if it's good concrete, tree branch shouldn't break the concrete, but anyway, he'll take pictures and stuff before he starts working. Sewer and alley between Third and Fourth Street, we're looking into it still.
But that falls, it'll be on City Park.
I don't, was that, was that turned in our insurance company? Because that was.
What one is that?
A sewer between Third and Fourth Street and alley, it was a city that dug through it.
I'm sorry, I don't want you to say the name out loud, but without knowing the name, I can't. You can come in and check with me on the claims we presented, I know there are a few sewer plants.
I think you helped them fill out the paperwork.
If I did, then it was turned in.
Then it's probably down in, yeah.
So I guess we gotta wait and see about that. Reuse of the streetlights, here's what Public Works came up with. The only way we can give the Legion light poles is if we put it out to everybody and sell them out right. I bid or gets mom. So, Public Works. So, Public Works decided to do, is the city needs two extra lights on that side of the Freedom Trail. So the city can be putting in two lights on that side of Freedom Trail, run in electricity underneath the Freedom Trail, hook them up. There'll be city lights there on the Freedom Trail, but they'll be on the Legion side, help light up the, that's what Public Works recommends, so it's up to the council whether they want to go with it or not. I guess we'll put it on, one of the meetings, vote on it. Does it need votes to be done?
I think depending on the support that you get from council tonight, if they feel like that's a good solution, to go ahead and add two additional city lights to the Freedom Trail, but have them on the American Legion side. I don't see that it would need to come to a vote, they're still our lights, they're still going to be on our Freedom Trail, just on the west side of the trail versus the east side of the trail.
So we'll watch everybody's opinion.
I, I think it's a good idea, does it meet the needs of what we were presented tonight? Does that meet their needs, wherever, wherever we're going to place them, would be my question.
We're going to place them, yes.
Let me, let me offer one other thing, we've been approached by several other nonprofits in town, and, and asked if they could, I say have, however that works out, so I don't know if, I don't know if council will want to, Ochs knows off as a lot, or individually, and I only say that because we do have people that are interested in town, and I don't, well, I'm sure we have private folks, but a lot of, some nonprofits that have approached us already, so.
The only way we can sell them is if we do like we did with doctors.
Yeah, but we can sell them individually as well.
I think we should go individually.
Yeah.
I don't think someone should come get them all.
Or we'll have to have them appraised, and they'll have to give their praise in the mouth.
We are going to repurpose, we have 127 of them, I think is the final count, mayor, if I'm not mistaken. We need 60 some odd for the trail, 70, well, tell me include the, the extra ones along the Legion, so, you know, we've still got another 70, 90 poles that, and, you know, if, if we go by lot, I will say this, is you'll have somebody out of Rapid City buy them all, and take them to Rapid City, and, you know, that's the only downside to that. If we do it individually, Deb, as you said, you know, a lot of those will be retained here in town, I'm sure, and the nonprofits will have an opportunity then to, to buy them as well.
We've also discussed putting them in the parks, too.
Yes.
Like Butler Park and Chautauqua.
I don't think we ought to, we don't think we ought to get rid of any until the city determines what they want to keep.
Right.
Because there's old lights on the old back road.
Exactly.
There's four lights back there that don't get changed, so we're going to need extras for breakage, all sorts of stuff, so it'll have to determine on what the city wants to keep before we.
Yeah, I don't think we should be in any hurry to be getting rid of them.
No.
No, we're not in any hurry.
Anyway, I need to know what you guys think of the Legion thing. JR said okay, Deb?
I like the idea, yeah.
I do.
Because it's going to be right along, we're going to put the other lights along the Freedom Trail, so they'll blend in.
I think it's going to be good over there, because it gives a lot more lighting for that, that sidewalk.
Well, if you put them on the west side of Freedom Trail, at that location, it stays out of the way for any of the flood channel cleanup activities that would be going on.
Yep. So if I understand council's intent, we'll, we'll hang on to the additional 90, whatever we have.
Until we decide.
Until we decide finally what council wants to do with all of them.
Yep, yep. We want to use up as many of them as we can for our own things.
Absolutely.
And I would like to light up some of our parks with them.
Yep.
I, I think by lighting up the parks, maybe the vandalism will go down, I hope.
There are lights in some parks, and electricity is expensive, so any conversation we should try, try to consider the cost to install and then to maintain.
Right.
There is electricity in Centennial Park. All we'd have to do is run it to different lights, because there's lights on different, different ball fields and everything, so there is electricity up there.
Thousand dollars worth of rechargeable lights during this road project that we talked about repurposing in some of the parks after we're done using them.
We've also discussed looking at converting those to solar, the old, the, the ones we've taken out, trying to convert those with a, with a solar pack, so that's a possibility.
We also talked about the annual burn of the brush pile, but we didn't talk about when we're going to do it. Last, last year, I think we did it in March. We talked about it, but I didn't write down what date.
Yeah, I don't remember what month it was last year, Craig.
Okay, road project update, Tracy told you everything I know here. The wastewater treatment plant, to put that lid on, we need five days to clean it and get it ready for them to put the lid on. We have enough backup for five days, so it has to all be done in five days, so Tracy and the guy at the sewer plant.
Jason. Jason.
I ain't supposed to say names. Fire hydrant, at this point, Tracy and all of us think it's, it's a safety issue now, because there's three fire hydrants up there and none of them are working. We need to replace that, that three inch main. It's not close to any fire hydrants, but it feeds the fire hydrants. I think he said there's 120 feet of it, he thinks we can do it in-house. It saved us almost $100,000, so I guess we're going to try that. Tracy's supposed to let us know.
Where's that at, Craig?
It's up on, uh.
Off of Happy Hollow on Terrace.
Edgewood Terrace.
Where they had that fire.
Yeah. Happy Hollow, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, that's all I got. Our next meeting will be something about, January 10th, 1 o'clock, Mueller Center.
Any questions for Craig? Just some additional information of what Craig was talking about, the lights that are coming off of Main Street. I'd asked Billy to get a count of the number of lights that are coming down, he said there's 127 of them that the city will be retaining. Asked him to get a count of the Ballard lights on the Freedom Trail, he said there's 63. Ron, the gentleman that talked with you tonight, has also done a count, his count is a little higher than the 63. But the idea behind it, Jeff had mentioned that the city's been approached by a nonprofit to have a, a light or two. I've been approached by a private citizen to purchase some lights, what's the city going to do with them? So I'd asked Public Works, because Jeff had mentioned that he had some thoughts for putting some lights on a trail up at Butler Park. So I think council, you need to decide, as a city, where you want to have lights, and figure out, is that going to be 127? Or are we going to have extras left over from the locations to have them, and then figure out what you want to do with the extras? Whether you want to keep them for parts, or whether you want to sell them, however you want to manage that. Before we go committing lights to anybody, you need to figure out what you want to do with them.
Now, Misty, question for you. We sold those lights to individual people, we'd have to have them appraised, and have to be appraised.
You have to follow all of the same rules for surplus items, and so individually, if they're under $500, and I wouldn't recommend doing it individually, because there's a group of them, you'll determine how many you'll surplus. If it's over 500, then you have to sell it like closed, sealed bids, or at auction.
But I would also recommend, I mean, this.
If they're worth more than 500.
Yeah, we're way ahead of ourselves now, but I will say that, as I think what I just said a few minutes ago, I think what I would recommend to council is that you kind of do it in two segments, you, we, we figure a, a, a price that we sell them to anybody, nonprofits, public, whatever, and then whatever's left, we can put into a lot and sell those, you know, we, we can figure all that out, and we're getting ahead of ourselves here, but that's probably a better way to do it, now that I think it through.
I suspect we're going to be approached by more people about what we're going to do with the lights, so we need to come up with.
I agree, you should slow roll this, we don't know, and it's important to keep them while you don't know whether or not you need them, and make that determination first.
I agree.
Where are they going to go? Craig had also mentioned the brush pile. I believe Craig and Jeff were at the inspection this year when D A N R came out and took a look at the site, and they had mentioned that our permit does not allow us to burn, we're required to burn in daylight hours. We found that the process that we've been using, it's working much better when we light the pile in the early morning, when the winds are very calm, the smoke column is going straight up, and it's mostly burned by the time people wake up. John had put together a, a process, a checklist for burning the pile, which we didn't follow last year, as far as the specifics of who we're notifying, so I've been working on that checklist, have been talking with Billy about it a little bit, but I think what we need to do is we need to have a meeting with D A N R and explain to them our process and why we feel it works better to not light the, the pile during the day, but get the majority of it burnt prior to daylight, and get them on board with allowing us to burn the way we're burning. Because right now, we're not burning per hour permit, and last folks we want to get upset are those folks. So we're working through what that policy needs to look like, and then be able to have a conversation with D A N R and see where they'll get on board with how we're burning it. Any other questions for Craig? Thank you, Craig.
Yep.
Jeff, is your golf course committee still on hiatus?
Yes, golf course committee's on hiatus until probably the first of March, or thereabouts. I'll put that information out on the schedule as soon as we have it. We've already discussed the release of the RFP for the rookin' claim, I won't go into that again, we'll get that released soon. The, there is a council and I and the mayor had discussed the management seminar, if you will, training, so we're looking for, we've got a couple of quotes on proposals for a springtime, two-day mandatory management workshop, more to follow on that when I get a little more information, but we're looking at probably the March, late March, early April timeframe. We have submitted the, the request for the AmeriCorps team to assist with the Fall River Restoration and Protection Project, that request went out today, and we should know in about 45 days if we get that team, that would be a huge help to us getting that down there. Finally, the Missoula Children's Theater Workshop is the last week of January, as a reminder, interest is strong and signups are going well with that, so subject to your questions, that's all I've got this evening.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Misty, your finance officer report?
I'm trying not to take too much time, but I wanted to give you a couple of updates we missed the last time, the Chamber Christmas soiree that you were invited to by Olivia when she gave her update, has been postponed until this Thursday, January 5th, it's 4 to 7 PM at the Mueller Center, and I did post a notice of forum, so if you're interested in attending, if there's more than four of you, nobody has to leave. Residential tax rebates, you approved all but one that we did receive for this year, 14 have responded, there was one unresponsive, $14,113.64 was rebated back. There are five that are not yet paying taxes on the improved value, so this will continue an additional five, six, or seven years, but there are some folks who are in their third year of receiving the five-year of tax rebate, so I don't think that number will grow hugely, may grow up to about 20, 22,000, and then start to taper back down again, is our estimates. No enterprise subsidies were needed for 2022 for Evans Pund or the Golf Course, congratulations to both those facilities. They do have building repairs that are needed in 2023, and the recent hail damage insurance money did help the cash balances in both those funds. Rosa Engineering did get our big grant replacement submit, or grant application submitted for the replacement of the Minnacotta Bridge, and so then I'm going to move into the monthly finance officer report that is through the 28th of December. Note, these do not include all 2022 entries and are not final 2022 numbers. Your year-to-date profit and loss summary report by fund shows the Water Fund, the Wastewater Fund, the Solid Waste Fund, and the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund having a loss, and all other funds showing a gain for the year, and again, these are not final numbers, but something that you can look at through the end of, or through the 28th of December. I was able to post the last appropriation and contingency transfers, so as you review the fund summary report, which shows you the budget versus actual for revenue and expenses, we no longer have any funds that are over 100% in expenditures, now that we posted those. Included the investment reports and the cash balance reports as always. When it comes to annual financial reporting, I give you a reminder of the objectives, so to demonstrate that current year revenues are adequate to cover, to cover or finance current year expenditures, and also that we, as a city, have adequately demonstrated that resources are being used according to legally adopted budgets and plans. We follow GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles, and those are established by GASB, Government Accounting Standards Boards, and we track, calculate, and post a number of additional entries after the last day in our 12-month accounting period. Payables, receivables, prepaid expenses, and various accrual calculations are posted to ensure that we are accurately representing the financial condition of the city at year end, in compliance with those generally accepted accounting principles. Our annual report will be presented by the first meeting in May, and once again, we're working with Cadel Thorstensen to complete our annual financial statements and audit report, which begins after the presentation of the annual report, and is typically provided to council and the public by either the second meeting in June or the first meeting in July. Give you a summary of our year-to-date municipal tax collection, which has exceeded budget projections overall by 36% or 631,000. Although it's difficult to pinpoint exactly what factors lead to increased collection of sales tax revenue, it is certain that it was the result of more sales for our local businesses, and also the application of sales tax to online purchases. Our large construction projects also impact sales tax collection. Update on the Minnacotta Bridge application, once again, we had a calculation correction which affected our big score, which puts the city in a very strong position for receiving the requested grant funding. We need to be prepared for about $473,000 in expenses, that would be the city's overall estimated total cost, and construction will most likely occur in either the fall of 2025 or 2026. You approved your 2023 budgeted donations to Prairie Hills Transit, Shedco, the Senior Center, and then also the annual payments made to Fall River County Dispatch. The Fire Department requests to receive monthly remittances for their total 2023 subsidy, and so those payments are made in the bills in between batches which are approved monthly. If you have any questions about the timing or amounts of any of these payments, don't hesitate to ask. Last reminder for the 23 Legislative Rib Dinner and Municipal Government Day, haven't heard any interested parties in attending, but you still have a little time, refund deadlines are January 31st. On Wednesday, the 22nd, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 21st of December, the mayor, city administrator, and I attended the South Dakota Transportation Commission meeting virtually to discuss our application for the SDDOT State Highway Fund Loan for local governments. Our application submission was reviewed and discussed by the eight commission members representing four areas of the state. After a lengthy review and discussion, our request was approved seven to one, with the main concern and objection being related to collateral and our ability to repay. Although our request was for $1,967,000 at 0% interest for 10 years, what was approved was $1,966,137.25 at 1% for 10 years. There is discussion regarding the allowable term on municipal notes. South Dakota Codified Law 92512 is the statute that provides us the authority to enter into an unsecured promissory note for a term of not more than 20 years. We are currently awaiting the note from the DOT, and will present it to full council for review and acceptance. We are currently awaiting the note from the DOT and will present it to full council for review and acceptance. As previously discussed, this loan will cover only transportation expenses and will be paid for from the 212 Additional Sales Tax Fund during its duration. The city is still considering a water, wastewater revenue bond for the added expenses in those funds. As a reminder, the next meeting will also be on Tuesday due to the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. So that will be Tuesday, the 17th as opposed to Monday, the 16th. And then I wrap up just looking back at 2022. I'm always amazed at what our small team is able to achieve. There definitely were ups and downs, wins and losses, successes and failures. And although much was achieved, there's still so many projects left lingering into 2023. It's my hope that in 2023, we can continue working towards making both the community of Hot Springs and city government even better. Thanks for all you do to make these things happen and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Any questions for Misty? Misty had mentioned the Department of Transportation loan. I had sent council two figures. We were hopeful for a 0% interest for 10 years. And the email I sent referenced what that payment would have been. And then also what the payment is going to be at 1% for 10 years. So if you're interested, go back and take a look at that email. Plus, it'll be in the, the agreement that the DOT sends us, so you'll see that final figure. It went up, but not significantly. All right. Now that 2022 has come to a close, I want to thank all city employees for their individual contributions to make 2022 a very successful year. These folks show up every day and continue to make their daily routine look easy. Thank you for all you do for the residents of Hot Springs and for each council member. The city is almost a year into our Highway 385 road reconstruction and utilities replacement project. This project is a few months behind schedule, but the contractor performing the water and sewer work is working later into the winter months than originally planned to try and get the project back on schedule. Full work is expected to begin again in mid to late March, depending on the weather. When work does begin, the current plan is to finish the work between University Avenue and Baltimore Avenue and then continue south to Detroit Avenue. Work on the foundations for the support piles for the suspended sidewalk is expected to begin in January. Related to the suspended sidewalk construction, Misty's talked about this. The council approved a request from the South Dakota Department of Transportation for additional funding to complete the construction of the sidewalk. This wasn't an easy decision for council to make, and I want to personally thank them for recognizing the cost increases weren't something we had control over, but needed to be funded. Misty also mentioned council will have to look at funding the increase in the sewer and water cost portion of the project. After the contract for the sewer and water project was awarded and construction began, some infrastructure that was believed to be in good condition was found needing to be replaced. Again, not an easy decision to make, but a necessary one to ensure a new highway isn't constructed over failing sewer and water. I expect that 2023 will throw some challenges at our city, but I'm confident with the employees we have and this council's willingness to address those challenges that 2022 will be another successful year. And again, I can't thank the employees and this council enough for all the work that went into getting us through 2023. And I'm anxious to see our road reconstruction work begin again. And I'm particularly excited about seeing, hopefully, a completely assembled suspended sidewalk for the, the community to really get a feel for what that's gonna be and the enhancement that's gonna bring to the city. Thank you again, and any questions for me? All right, gonna get a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.